Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Claren.
Here.
Commissioner Toops.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Good job, everybody's here. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, I'm going to open the meeting for a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to give public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have a public comment, please line up at the podium, state your name for the record. You're limited to three minutes. Afterwards, please fill out a public comment form and hand it to Kaylee. Okay, I'm going to close that public comment session. Number five on my agenda, approval of minutes. We have minutes from the May 20th, 2025 edition of the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any proposed edits? Can we get a motion?
A motion.
Second. Chair Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Claren.
Yep.
Commissioner Toops.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved for May 20th, 2025. Moving on to item 7.1, its application 2024-88/HDR, the Van Gorder Residence Historic Design Review. At this point, I will be recusing myself from the proceedings because of geographic proximity. My husband and I own the lot across the street. And I'll be handing the meeting over to Sammy.
All right, thank you. Chelsea, do you have a presentation for us?
I do, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The project before you this evening is the Van Gorder Residence. The project requests a historic design review, zoning clearance, and certificate of appropriateness for a new 4,795-square-foot, single-family residence within the historic downtown area, specifically the River Character Area. The project is three stories, including a daylighting basement which faces the river. The Planning Commission does not typically review historic design review applications, so I'll take this slide to give you a little bit of background on historic preservation in the town. Historic preservation has been a part of Truckee since at least 1981, which was prior to incorporation. Truckee then incorporated in 1993, and the Downtown Truckee specific plan, which included the historic design guidelines, was adopted in 1997. As a part of the recent general plan update, this became the Downtown Truckee Plan, and the historic design guidelines are included in that. The Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, or HPAK, reviews projects within the historic preservation overlay. The HPAK's role is to review for consistency with the historic design guidelines, and they act in an advisory role. The HPAK does not approve or deny projects, but makes recommendations to the Community Development Director. The Community Development Director is the review authority for historic design review following the recommendation of the HPAK. The project location is shown here, outlined in red. The property is a currently undeveloped lot on Southeast River Street, adjacent to the As mentioned, the property is located within the historic overlay and specifically the River Character Area. The River Character Area is shown here in green. There are specific standards within the historic design guidelines that relate to the River Character Area and typical historic structures within this character area. Historically, the River Character Area was developed with small, single-family residences on narrow lots with small side setbacks, along with some commercial uses mixed in and a few multifamily units. Southeast River Street, which is where this property is located, is associated with historic Chinese residences and businesses. However, due to a fire, the buildings tend to be more contemporary, and remaining buildings tend to have been modified. Some of the key characteristics of the River Character Area are one- and two-story buildings, woodlapped siding, front porches, and gable-front residential buildings. Simple building forms are encouraged, and porches are also strongly encouraged. Some project history on this project in particular. The Van Gorder Residence was initially submitted to the Planning Division in June of last year. The project was deemed incomplete, and then in August, staff had a phone meeting with the applicant to discuss staff concerns with the design's consistency with historic design guidelines. The following month, staff met with the applicant virtually to review some proposed changes, and in October, the project was resubmitted. This iteration of the project went before the HPAK in December of 2024. The project was then resubmitted with some design changes in February of this year, and this iteration of the project went before the HPAK in March of 2025. Also in March, staff had a virtual meeting with the applicant team to discuss the project status, including the potential of elevating the project to Planning Commission. In May, staff met with the applicant team to, virtually, sorry, met with the applicant team virtually, to review some potential design changes. The project was then elevated to Planning Commission level and scheduled for a May meeting. At the request of the applicant, the item was continued from that May meeting to the next available agenda, which is the July Planning Commission Agenda, and that brought us to today. Some background on those meetings that have already occurred. We have the December 2024 HPAK meeting, which was the first iteration of this project. There were four commissioners present at that meeting, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the HPAK voted 4-0 to continue the project to a later date and provided some feedback to the applicant on the design. Some of the feedback included revising the design to be more modest and appropriate for the River Character Area specifically, reducing the size and number of windows, reducing the roofline to be less modern in appearance, incorporating natural materials into the exterior, and revising the exterior lighting fixtures to be compliant with the dark-sky ordinance. The minutes from this meeting are provided as an attachment to your staff report. In March, the revised project went to HPAK again, with three HPAK members present. The minutes from this meeting are also available as an attachment to the staff report. At this meeting, the three present commissioners noted that they appreciated the changes to the project and the changes to exterior materials. They compared the size of the residence to the 4,440-square-foot residence next door. The commissioners also noted that the historic character of Southeast River Street was changing over time with approval of newer residences. Comments were also made that the project would have been easier to approve if it had been smaller in size. At the conclusion of this meeting, the HPAK voted 3-0 to recommend approval of the project to the Community Development Director. As mentioned, the Community Development Director elevated this project to review by the Planning Commission, which is consistent with allowances of the Development Code, in lieu of denying the project. The review authority's role is to review the project for consistency with the general plan, Development Code, and historic design guidelines. In this case, the Community Development Director could not make the findings to approve the project due to the size, design, and potential for setting a precedent for large modern residences in the River Character Area. Instead, staff requests policy guidance from the Planning Commission. In early May, staff met with the applicant via a virtual meeting to review a revised project design with the goal of avoiding a Planning Commission hearing in the interest of project timing. Staff communicated to the applicant that the director could not make the findings to approve the project, and suggested reductions in floor area, windows, and a change to some exterior materials. The changes were not acceptable to the applicant, and accordingly, the applicant chose to move forward to Planning Commission. As mentioned, it was originally scheduled for May and was continued to the July meeting, which is where we are here. It should be noted that because the Community Development Director chose to elevate the project in lieu of making a decision, the applicant was not charged for staff time associated with bringing the project before the Planning Commission. To discuss the project as it relates to the historic design guidelines and consistency with those, this presentation is going to focus on four key themes of the project: exterior materials, bulk and massing, windows, and roofs. To start, we'll look at the exterior materials of the proposed structure. The historic design guidelines have several guidelines related to the exterior materials. I've included a few on the slide. Notably, the guidelines require that developments appear similar, excuse me, that materials appear similar to those used historically. In this case, the applicant has proposed a graphite-colored, standing-seam metal roof, gray fiber cement vertical siding, full-story height stone veneer, and red cedarwood accents. Historically, the River Character Area would have seen river rock and painted wood horizontal siding. The rear elevation offers another look at the exterior building materials, again showing that metal roof, stone veneer, vertical siding, and wood accents. The historic design guidelines specifically state that the mass and scale of buildings are among the elements that have the greatest influence on compatible construction in the area, and that new construction should appear similar in mass and scale to historic structures found in the River Character Area. Because the guidelines mention that the mass and scale should be similar to that of historic structures in the River Character Area, staff researched the size of historic structures throughout the River Character Area. The average size of historic structures in the River Character Area is 2,193 square feet. That includes both residential and non-residential historic structures. The average size of historic residences in the Character Area is 1,888 square feet. In comparison, the proposed residence is 4,795 square feet, which is more than double the size of the average historic structure. It should be noted that the largest historic residence in the Character Area is located immediately adjacent to the subject property. At 4,440 square feet in size, this residence is substantially larger than all other historic residences in the River Character Area and is itself an outlier in size. At the first HPAK meeting, the residence was incorrectly noted as smaller in size based on some numbers that were provided on the applicant's submittal as well as county available data. Since that meeting, staff has ensured that we've used permit history when it was available to account for the data used for floor area size, and relied only on county data when the permit history was incomplete or unavailable. It should also be noted that the adjacent historic residence underwent a large addition in approximately 1995, which was prior to the creation of the HPAK. The guidelines for new buildings and the River Character Area design guidelines do not speak specifically to a quantifiable limit of window size and number. However, the windows and glass doors of the proposed residence dominate the front and rear facades and contribute significantly to the modern appearance of the overall structure. Chapter six of the historic design guidelines includes design guidelines for individual building components and includes some guidance on windows. This chapter states that a general rule for a window opening is that the height should be twice the dimension of the width, and that the windows should be simple in shape, arrangement, and detail. This guidance is provided in the context of modifications to historic structures; however, it does provide some indirect guidance on typical window forms in the historic district. Both the River Character Area design guidelines and the design guidelines for new buildings include guidelines relating to roof forms. The guidelines note that simple forms of gable, hip, and shed roofs are appropriate. Further, the guidelines note that roofs should be similar in size to those used historically on comparable buildings. Historically, in residential contexts, the maximum ridge length was 35 to 40 feet. The proposed design features multiple roof forms, including some low-sloping 1-12 roofs that have the visual appearance of a flat, modern roof. Written public comments that have been received are included as an attachment to the staff report. Additionally, minutes from both HPAK meetings are included as attachments, which include the verbal public comments that were provided at those meetings. It should be noted that these written comments were received prior to each of those HPAK meetings, and no additional written comments were received prior to this Planning Commission meeting. Some of the topics noted in the public comments are noting the potential for increased property values with the new development, concerns over the size and architectural compatibility of the development with the River Character Area, loss of views, and snow storage. The applicant has also submitted a letter that has been routed to the Planning Commission for review. The applicant team believes that the project is consistent with the historic design guidelines and that it should be approved. Staff recommends that the project be found exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15270 of the SEQUIT Guidelines for projects which are disapproved. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt pursuant to Section, excuse me, I already mentioned that, and adopt Resolution 2510, denying the zoning clearance, historic design review, and certificate of appropriateness. The appeal period is 10 days from the decision date, which would end on Friday, July 25. Staff believes that the applicant can design a single-family residence that is appropriately sized and designed for the River Character Area. Some suggestions to achieve this include revising exterior materials to match the character area, including lowering the height of the stone veneer and revising siding to horizontal painted wood. A second suggestion is eliminating the basement level of the residence to remain consistent with the typical one-to-one-and-a-half-story homes and no longer having a three-story appearance from the riverside. This would also decrease floor area to approximately 4,140 square feet, based on the current design. This would be still substantially larger than the average size of historic structures in the district, but it would not be larger than all of the historic residences in the River Character Area. A third recommendation would be reducing the scale of the windows and glazing, which would have a substantial effect on the overall modern design of the residence and would be in scale with historic patterns of window placement. These recommendations were made to the applicant in May of this year at their request as a potential path to approval without elevating the project to the Planning Commission level. Alternative actions that the Planning Commission may choose to take include finding the proposed project consistent with the historic design guidelines, River Character Area, and surrounding historic development patterns. Findings and a SEQUIT determination would need to be made to support this decision. If the Commission wishes to use this action, staff requests that the Commission provide direction on the approval findings. Another option available to the Commission is continuing the public hearing to a date in time certain. The Planning Commission may request additional information from the applicant or from staff. If new information is presented at the next meeting, the public portion of the hearing must be reopened if new information is submitted. Third, the Commission may choose to direct the applicant to continue working with staff on a design that can be approved by the Community Development Director. If the Commission wishes to use this action, staff requests that the Commission provide direction on requested design changes. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant team is also available with a presentation. We have the property owner Jennifer Van Gorder and the architect Ben Garperson present.
Thanks, Chelsea. Let's hear the applicant presentation, and then we'll move to questions.
Green light.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today. I'm here because my family and I want to build a home in Truckee. It's a place we love, and we are excited to be a part of it. Southeast River Street holds deep, personal meaning for us. My husband grew up in the house, right next to our lot. And while, sorry, my husband grew up in the house, right next to our lot, and while his family no longer owns that house, they've since sold it, they still remain in downtown Truckee. They remember when their house was practically the only house on the street. They've witnessed the growth that has come firsthand. They could probably answer any question about historic downtown Truckee. They've been here for a very long time. The lot has been in my family, because I'm a part of it now, and it will remain in the family, which makes this project even more meaningful to us. Over the past year, we've worked closely with the Planning Department, following every step laid out to us from the very beginning. We've listened to feedback from the community, from HPAK, and from the Planning Department, addressing concerns about rooflines, view impacts, and even the broader issue of housing availability. As a family of four, who have lived in a 900-square-foot apartment overseas for six years, we deeply understand the need for housing, and we're simply just trying to build a modest home. Our team has carefully reviewed and revised our design based on the HPAK recommendations. We trusted HPAK as the expert body guiding us through this historic design guidelines. That's why it's frustrating to read in the staff report that we were submitted on Friday that some HPAK members may have misapplied those guidelines, especially when those interpretations affected our project in many ways. Despite that, we've made every required revision and met all conditions set by the Planning Department and the Community Development Director. I won't go into every detail, but I do trust that you've reviewed the materials and my letter that I submitted, and are familiar with how our design has evolved since the beginning of working with HPAK, back with our first HPAK meeting in December of '24. This process has been long, but we followed it. And I'll close by referencing Chapter 13 of the Historic Design Guidelines, which shaped our approach from the start. And it states, "Don't try to make a new building look like it's older than it is. A contemporary interpretation of historic styles often works best. New buildings should be distinguishable as recent additions, simple in form and detail, and visually compatible with older structures without being direct copies." That's the spirit we followed, and we hope you'll support our effort to build a home that respects Truckee's character while allowing my family to grow and be a part of it. And now, Ben and I would like to open it up for questions that you guys might have for us regarding the project.
Thank you. With that, there are fine questions for both staff and the applicant.
I think we can do it all at once since you're here. Who wants to kick us off? Mitch, I feel like you should kick us off.
Well, I'm going to disclose that I spoke with Brendan Riley about this. I put a call in and got a response from Sean Mortier. I put a call in to Bill Kenny, who did not respond. I put a call in to Kaylee Gove, who did not respond. I'm also going to disclose that I live on South River Street, on the other, 10115 specifically. And I've just been walking up and down the last couple of days, checking it out, seeing what's going on. So that's it. That's what I've got to say so far.
I also should disclose, I also spent a lot of time this weekend looking at the site. I was on a river float on Sunday and floated down past all the homes. I also met with the applicant team this morning, and I spent some time walking up and down the street as well. I do have a question for staff, just to confirm. So the historic design guidelines were adopted in 1997? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Chapter 13 and 17, so 13 is for all new construction, and then 17 is specifically for the River Character Area. And in this case, they both, the guidelines from both apply, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. And then, the table in the staff report, very helpful, was that table the same table or very similar to the table used at the HPAK review? And I should have gone more carefully through the HPAK notes.
That's okay. At the HPAK review, the staff report was shorter, and so there were select guidelines that were pulled out. For the purposes of the Planning Commission meeting, we wanted to provide you with all of the guidelines, so every single guideline from those two chapters is reflected in the staff report for Planning Commission.
And what were the guidelines of the ones that were pulled out? Were those the ones that were discussed? Or they kind of kept it to what was in the staff report? Did they go into other guidelines that weren't necessarily identified? I'm just curious, where are they focused?
At HPAK. My recollection is that at the second meeting in March, they did talk about some of the other guidelines that were not specifically in the staff report. That's my recollection.
And then...
So I'll just add a quick note. The December meeting had different HPAK members than were there at the March meeting, so we don't have a consistent set of, you know, voices that we heard in December and March, which is unfortunate. And certainly, the projects changed over time, so, sorry, the project changed over time. So there were certainly different points made throughout both of the HPAK meetings that may be different, and then in some cases overlap. It's hard, I mean, you're dealing with two different hearings.
Different people.
Yes, and people.
Got it. And then I have another question. Yeah, I saw the staff note that HPAK was essentially making some of their decisions based on the wrong criteria. They were using all buildings in the area when the criteria is really about the historic buildings in the neighborhood, correct? Which, when I read the guidelines, it is very clear, it says, "the historic buildings." How did they get to that point of making that interpretation, or was it just unclear? I'm just curious how that happened.
I'm not sure. I don't recall exactly. I do know that some of the early discussions, we were looking at the house in the context of Southeast River Street, which should include some nonhistoric residences. I don't know if that informed some of those later discussions. I'm kind of guessing a little bit right now.
I mean, I will add, just based on my history and working with HPAK, that we've had similar conversations with projects on South River Street, because South River Street doesn't have any remaining historic buildings. So when projects like Hotel Avery came in, or there were two newer residences that were constructed by a developer named Tom Grossman, there were multiple discussions about, well, what is the character of this area when there's no remaining historic buildings? They did often default to talking about the River Character Area overall in those discussions, just because you have proximity to what's on Riverside or East River.
Thank you, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Amy, any clarifying questions?
So in the report, in the staff report, when the applicant team is responding to what timeline of incorporation, are they responding to, "we have made the changes and that's what you're seeing now"? Or are they, when they say, "we redesigned the roof," for instance, is that the first go-around or the second? Because it's kind of confusing as to where we are in terms of design.
The project that's included in this presentation, and the images that are included in your staff report, are the second iteration. So this is after the feedback was taken into consideration by the applicant team. I did not include images from the initial December meeting to try to avoid complicating it.
So as presently designed, what is the FAR? Because you have median FAR in your list of historic structures, which unfortunately doesn't distinguish between residential and commercial, so that makes it a little challenging to understand context, because some of them are like 5,000 square feet, right? There's a lot of different buildings going on there. So I'm trying to understand, as you told me, and I appreciate your email, we did have some email communication, because I was confused about the timeline. I think your slide was very concise and helpful. Thank you. The FAR in the neighborhood tends to be, I think the highest one is like 41, that next door, and it's difficult, and I stood, like Jason, was standing there, looking at it, and if somebody said there was someone trespassing on your property, I do apologize, that was me, just walking around. Okay. Well, but your neighbors probably were looking at me going, "what the heck is she doing?" Anyway, so I'm trying to understand FAR and how this relates to other properties to make sure we're calling apples apples, I guess is...
Sure. I don't have the FAR in front of me. I would need to look up the lot area, which maybe the applicant could provide, and we could do some quick math. However, the guidelines don't speak to FAR, they speak to overall size. So we can certainly get that FAR number, we, like I said, do some quick math, but I just wanted to also point out that...
So, Chelsea, the lot area is 12,344 square feet. And, you know, again, that's kind of been the, you know, the challenge of this project. It's such an outlier, right? It's the largest lot on that street on both sides. You know, the last house that was permitted was the Comp. Their lot is 3,000 square feet, and their home is, you know, obviously pinned at setback to setback, right? And it's that one that's been on the market, that spec house, for about a year or so. It's across the street. So again, the challenge is with that FAR, and that's really been kind of our argument from the get-go, is that, given the size of this lot, it would support a larger home.
Are you looking for floor-to-area ratio or the overall size of the home?
Floor-to-area ratio.
Okay. We can get that now that we know the...
The FAR is approximately .39.
So that is within what I see as the average there. I understand there's no guidelines in that. I'm just trying to understand coverage. Where I live, coverage is like, you go over it, you don't get to go over it.
Coverage and FAR are different metrics that...
Indeed. But you know what I'm saying, is like, there are places where it's very strict, and we're not, we don't have guidelines that say you can only go so far. You know what, I'm just trying to understand if I've missed something when I'm reading.
Correct. The project is consistent with the maximum lot coverage... The project is consistent with the maximum lot coverage by the development standards, and the FAR is approximately 0.39.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. My question...
I do have, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
So to the applicant, the question of the basement came up. When do you recall being advised that that would be something that would get you through the approval? The removal of the basement? I mean, not that you can remove it. When was that?
Is your question asking, when did we start the process of putting that into the design? Or...
It was in our last correspondence, which was probably like three months ago.
So that wasn't initially requested of you?
No. It actually wasn't three months ago. It was like a month and a half ago. So after, in my letter that I wrote, hopefully you guys read it, we went, we had a first HPAK meeting in December, a second one in March. It was approved. The next day, we were told it wasn't going to be passed. We were given roughly two main items to address, the scale and the windows. We worked on that piece. And then in the letter, it shows clearly words from the planning department. "Oh, if you change these four additional items, then we'll approve it." And that's why we're here today. But at that point, at that point, which was, I want to say in May, is when we were told, "Remove the basement." So if there is an issue with the basement, it should have been brought up well in advance before we came to the first December meeting. We actually learned that we could put in a walkout basement. Actually, last summer around this time, when my father-in-law, Joe McGinnity, was at a local meeting and actually had a discussion with Danielle. And Danielle is the one that said, "We can build to a certain piece in the backyard."
Yeah, and it's a really unique lot because as of the river, kind of the topography makes its way, you know, pulls back away from the river. So it was just this wonderful opportunity, and it's super tucked in there, right? So this would be a full walkout basement with full retaining on all three sides, and it would be set back from the outermost deck like 15 to 20 feet. So, you know, instead of having twisted, you know, you look across the street and you see twisted supports from the, from the decks, and people got, you know, broken kayaks and furniture. You know, we just thought it was a really clean, unobtrusive way to have a storage area, and also this great access in-conditioned space out to the lower level. So by removing it, I, we just didn't feel how that would, you know, be a benefit to the, to the neighboring homes or the overall feel of the house.
And I'd like to add to that. So today, I was actually walking around the property as well, and actually went across the river and looked into the back of our yard. And I spoke to a neighbor, and I asked him if I could go on his property and take a look at my property across the way, and told him who I was. And he's like, "Oh, you're building that big house across the street." And I was like, "Whoa, I think there's a little misleading on that." And I said, he's like, "Oh, this big three-story house." And I was like, "Actually, it's not three stories. It's two stories with a walkout basement." So from the front angle of the house, you just see two stories, like a lot of the other houses on the street. And they're like, "Oh, okay." And he goes, "Oh, I have a walkout basement." And I was like, "You do? I didn't even notice that." So he showed me his walkout basement. And I said, "Well, if you look at my lot and you look at the house that my in-laws used to own right next door, they have a walkout basement." And he's like, "Oh, I didn't even know." And then the conversation furthered to, "Oh, you're going to keep the trees." And I was like, "We're going to keep as many trees as we can." So I know you're looking at these pictures on your screen on the computer, and it's just the back of the house. But I think what people need to realize is that there's a lot of natural growth in the back of this house. No one really is going to even see very much of the walkout basement. So there's trees that line the property, there's natural growth of aspens, and I think that that's like one piece that people need to realize. And it's actually tucked in, so once the deck is put up, it's going to be pretty dark down there.
Yeah, again, it's just a challenge because it's just such a unique lot, right? You know, both going back, you know, Amy, to your comment about the floor-to-area ratio and how the topography kind of pulls its way back from the river. But moving forward, if we would have had a floor-to-area ratio to work with, or even a maximum number, boy, it would have saved a lot of, a lot of energy on everybody's part, right? If we had some sort of established boundary, so we're not trying to hit this moving target, would have, so regardless of...
And a lot of money.
Yeah, exactly, and a lot of money. So regardless of how, you know, you know, what direction we take with this project, moving forward, planning HPAK would be, it would be great to develop some sort of floor-to-area ratio or coverage based on each lot size or, you know, river character area, or whatever it may be. But some sort of, some sort of hard numbers because it's, there's just been so much subjectivity going on, you know, in this project. So it's been, you know, I think it's been frustrating on all ends, which is not what anybody wants, but...
Vice Chair Taylor, can we provide some response?
Yes, please.
So I did have a conversation with Mr. McGinnity, but before this was submitted, and we only talked about the setback and how to calculate it because there's sort of two different calculations in the development code, depending on whether you're in the downtown specific plan area or out of it. So it's a little bit of a funky calculation because it's measured as one foot elevation, and it's sort of like this vertical calculation. So we walked through that quite a bit. We did not at the time have a conversation about any home designs as part of that. It was really just, you know, so they could figure out what their setbacks would be and make sure that they're compliant with the river setback for that. So I wanted to clarify that. Also, back to the work that Chelsea did, there were discussions about mass and scale in the HPAK staff reports and discussions, you know, between planning staff all the way back to August about the number of stories and the mass and scale. So it wasn't something that was just brought up sort of in the last three months. And the suggestions that came out of the conversation that we had, so sort of us and the applicant team, that Chelsea had, could you bring that slide back up, Chelsea? The one where we kind of talked about the recommendations? Those were at the request of the applicant when we were having that conversation. Typically, we don't make recommendations. What we do is kind of talk through where we find inconsistencies. But we were specifically asked to provide recommendations of what would it take for this to be approved at the director level? Those were sort of off-the-cuff options, but they were not requirements. They were ideas that we talked about that would, you know, we would be able to say, like, here are some options to satisfy consistency with the, with the guidelines, but never a requirement. I just want to make sure that that information's available.
I'd like to speak to that if I could.
I think we're just going to move it along. We've had applicant questions, and then we'll have time for discussion. But at this point, I'd like to open it to public comment, please.
Because that's incorrect.
If you have a public comment, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. When you are done, please fill out a comment form and hand it to Kaylee.
So am I done?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. I'm Valerie Lefrono, and we live at 10110 Southeast River Street. We will be the direct next-door neighbor to the proposed home. And the home, we've let, we left about 15 feet to the side, to the property line. So we have an area that has no structure, and we have a concern that the, the home will come so close to the property line. There are aspens that were planted, not by us, but were planted on the property line that really are going to be probably about five foot close to the house. And in one area, there's a very large blue spruce. And there's a, Chelsea, can you help me with the terminology of the encroachment? There's a forgiveness of three feet of an...
Are you speaking about the roof overhang?
Yep, the overhang.
The roof overhangs, I don't recall off-the-cuff what they were, but they are consistent with the development code.
Correct. I think they're coming to within, am I right, two feet? Are they allowed for three feet?
Three, three feet from the property line.
They're allowed three feet from the property line. Okay, so this blue spruce has got boughs that are about nine foot on that one side to the empty lot. So I think for sure that tree, I think that one will go. My guess is that the aspens being on the property line will be, for the most part, five foot from the house. I don't know how that's going to fare with the fire safety concept, whatever the fire department's thinking about that. I'm not sure they're going to love that. So when we talked about the walkout basement, and Jennifer mentioned that the trees, you wouldn't really see this basement too much with these trees. I could agree with that if the trees were to stand, but I'd be really surprised if on the, our property line, those trees were going to be standing when you got your house built that close to the property line. I just don't, I feel we would see this walkout basement. That's one thing. And then Danielle, you had said something about what is the character of this area? What is the river character of this area when there are no remaining historic buildings? And that's really true. Our building, we built it in 1998. It was finished in 99. And while it is not a historic building, we greenfielded it, of course, and, but we were required at that time to really pop out with dormers and make it as Victorian-looking as possible. And so while it's not a historic building, it really looks historic. And then one other thing is the concern that we have three minutes...
That's your time.
No storage with that overhang.
Thank you.
My name's Joe McGinnity, and since I was already brought up, I'd like to just interject that on that Southeast River Street, there are three historical homes. The Shotgun House, when you first drive in on the right, the old Herb Shop, and our old house, which is next door. The old house next door has been remodeled, and everything else on that street is brand-new. It's all Disneyfied. If you look at those homes across the street that Ms. Kavanaugh was referring to, the coverage on those are from property line to property line. I know because I developed that project. So it really, it baffles me why we're going through so many contortions over this. The historic house that we used to own does have a walkout basement. It is three stories. There's houses that are on that street, the Disneyfied ones, that are three stories that you see from the street. So I just want you to take that in consideration. And the recommended changes, I appreciate whatever input you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Graham Ware. I own the property almost directly adjacent, opposite the proposed development. My view is obviously going to be totally obstructed. I have no right to a view of the river, so, you know, I've got to bite that one and say, "Yeah, I always knew there was going to be a home built there." My worry is actually on two or three levels. One is snow. Where is the snow from that massive roof going to go? It's certainly not going to be into the three feet, basically, around the property. We already have issues where the snow plow doesn't know where to put the snow. There are two empty lots adjacent to me, and those have both got planning or both in the beginning parts of planning applications. So if they, if they're built as well, there will literally be no snow easement at all. So that's my biggest problem. We heard about the trees left and right. Every one of those will come down to meet fire regulations. I went out there this afternoon. I, I looked at the corner markers of that lot, and every one of those trees is going. So forget the architect renditions, and they look great, but there won't be any trees there. They can't be if we're meeting the five-foot regulations. Not unless you have a twig, basically, and that's not going to happen. We already have the issue on the other, six of the other homes on the other side of the road where we have a five-foot setback, a five-foot setback. There's very little place for the snow to go. There's trees in between that are dying, and the fire department wants them out anyway. So on the one hand, we were told we have to have aspens between, and on the other hand, the fire department says, "No, we can't." So we already have this thing about trees, but basically, there cannot be trees there to meet fire code. So, you know, let's not fool ourselves there. It's nice to have trees, but we can't have them. I still believe it's a nice-looking property. I think it needs to be slightly smaller to allow for that snow placement. And with all that said, and I've already said this to Jennifer, if I owned that land, I'd want to build a house just as big as she does, so... So, yeah, once again, my name is Graham Ware, and I'm at 10093 opposite the property.
Thank you.
I guess it's on. My name is Tony Lefrono. My wife spoke earlier. We're at 10110 Southeast River. I have one major, first, I want to explain our position on our property. It was a double lot. My brother and I went in together. We were going to build two row houses that, that's what the planning department wanted, row houses. My brother's the architect. He went to, with the planner, they went to San Francisco, he looked at houses and everything to go over this. But we were going to build two homes there. Somewhere, somehow, we were never told that it got rezoned. It became one lot. So now I'm stuck with a house that's a row house, that if I could have built one of those, if I had known then, maybe I could have, but I didn't have the option. So I have a row house, and I have a lot, no garage. That kind of stinks. Where do you put your skis and your, all kinds of junk that you keep? So we built a garage. Then, when I built the garage, we left more space on the one side because I remember Joe saying to me, "You got to have a place to store your snow. You got to have a place to store your snow." So instead of five feet, I took 15 feet. The other thing I have that, to me, is an eyesore, and I don't know how it got through. For the people that walk up and down the street, I hope somebody looked across the street at the accounting building. That is, it doesn't even belong there. It was built when we were there. Right now, I feel that if this house is built exactly the way it is, and I walk down the other side of the street, I would say the same thing. Where did that come from? There's too much glass back there. It's not a, it's not a home that looks like a home that fits the river. Yeah, it's beautiful, maybe belongs to North Star, but it's not. It's their family lot, and that's where they want it. But you can't have a North Star house, maybe, in that area. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we can do that. I'm sorry, sir.
You should know that it's an archy lot.
I'm sorry, sir. We can't do that.
That's an archy lot.
All right. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up for deliberation. Jason, do you want to kick us off? Okay. Well, we know that, based on everything that we've heard so far, we know that either one, we can deny the project, or two, we can really provide some helpful feedback, I think, for the applicant, which would be the goal either way we end up going. So based on that, I think maybe we should bring up our, I don't know if we had a slide with the questions, but the staff report had a question, had questions about things for us to consider related to... for us to consider related to window placement size and number, massing and sizing, roof lines and roof forms, and I may be missing one. Materials, material selection. So based on that, maybe we go through each of those individually and see if we have agreements, disagreements, suggestions. Does that sound like a good approach? All right. Jason doesn't want to start us, so maybe Amy, I'll throw it to you if that feels good. We can start with materials, and we'll go down the list.
On the guidelines section?
Yes. So looking for consistencies, and if we're finding inconsistencies, or we're agreeing with what staff has said, perhaps making suggestions as to how it could be remedied, or if we don't feel comfortable doing that, then seeing if there, you know, if we don't find any findings to disagree with staff's suggestion, then that's where we are.
Just to clarify, are we looking at the table of all the guidelines? Or are we looking at something, are we looking at what's on our screens now, or something else?
So those are questions that were, go ahead if you want to.
I just pulled those up because you were referencing them. So if the commission wanted to look at them, I pulled it up for you.
Or if you want the table, we can pull that up, too, from the staff report, if that would be helpful.
Which?
This is the staff report.
All right. Well, we can also just start with our thoughts, and then refer back to the staff report or table as needed. And I can kick us off. Let's start with materials. I see that the project has made changes related to the materials being used. I feel like it's vastly improved since that first design. However, there may be some inconsistencies in terms of colors. That's something we also read about in the public comments that have been attached to these staff reports, and was something that HPAK brought up in their first, at least their first round of discussion at their first meeting. So I still find that to be inconsistent. However, I think there would be options that they could move forward with to help fix that. How does everyone else feel?
So let's talk about vertical siding for a second. I think the house across the street is board and batten, is that correct?
Verticals, yes.
It's board and batten was the question. So yeah, so it's board and batten. So board and batten, if you go back into history of Truckee and building in general, was a type of construction. It wasn't a siding necessarily. You'd have a 1 by 12 or 1 by 16 board placed, and then another one next to it, another one next to it, another one next to it. And then you'd have battens to hide the seams, keep the air from flowing in. Behind that, you would have another 1 by 12 or 1 by 16, whatever you're using, that's staggered so that the seams don't match. And then on the inside of the house, you would put newspapers and wallpaper, usually is what people did back in the day. So I don't think comparing the existing siding that's drawn is comparable to board and batten. I don't see it that way. It's my own personal opinion. However, that was the only vertical-type siding, which wasn't really a siding, it was a style of building, it was a construction, a construction method. So personally, I would rather see the siding horizontal, which is historically correct. That's, that's, the house, the way it is, is beautiful, but it's very contemporary. It's hard to deal with the different messages that applicants are getting. The applicant was following codes that were told to make it not look old, and actually has the word contemporary in it, which flies in the face of historic look, in my personal opinion, again. But with that being said, I'm not sure why Hardy Beck is even allowed in the historic district, nor Trex, for that matter, but I don't know if that's up for discussion unless you want it to be, the rest of the commission wants it to be. For me, I think a horizontal lap with a wood grain, not a smooth siding, would be more reminiscent of what was built back in the day. If we're just sticking with siding right now, or materials, because I've got my own personal opinion on the mass and sizing, too. But if we're just saying with materials right now, roofs, roofs was wood, roofs for wood, historically, you know? And I've, gonna disclaim that I've done a bunch of projects in historic downtown Truckee, and actually was in front of Joe's wife when she was on HPAK. So it's, it's hard to say, metal roofs, if they were, pretty much only corrugated metal, if they were at all, and usually on a shed, not on a house, or on an addition. It wasn't, it wasn't a home material. However, looking through the historic district as a whole, you see them. How much do we look at strictly the historic homes? Although, again, conflicting messages from the codes say that we're supposed to be comparing to the historic homes only. And now we're getting conflicting stories of what's truly historic on that street and what's not. Well, the Shotgun House, so there is another historic house. You guys are saying it's just next door, and it's not.
There are three. So the Shotgun House, which was Ian Haas' old house on the corner.
Right.
The Herb Shop, and then what was previously the McGinnity House.
And then the Herb Shop was just the building, not the brick facade building next to it?
So the original historic building, which is what's currently designated as only the Chinese Herb Shop, it's just back in the 80s, you know, it was all one building, and so.
When McCarthy had it.
When McCarthy had it, yeah. So it got broken out into the nonhistoric portion, and that got rehabilitated into brick, and then the Herb Shop was restored.
So the Herb Shop is the original, and the brick is the?
The brick is nonhistoric.
Thank you. Okay, so if I'm gonna stick back to just siding and materials in general, I'm not sure what to do with a roof, because there really was no metal roofs. Where do you, where do you draw that line? Stone veneer, the flat stacked, the flat stacked stone is also a more modern type of construction technique that you just didn't see historically. And that's what steals from the historic feel. So for me, I'm not a fan of that particular stone veneer, and it only says natural stone, it doesn't say which type of stone it is. I think something more in the river rock, not that I'm a fan of river rock, because I'm not, but something more in the, in the historic, what was used historically. Historically, foundations were made out of lots of rocks and very little concrete. And as a matter of fact, they would throw any kind of garbage they could find to stretch that concrete. And when I written, did my renovations on Donner Pass Road, we found that. We would find horseshoes, we would find buckets, we would find all kinds of stuff that was in the concrete that they used to spread it out, because it was expensive. So when we're talking about stone, what are we trying to emulate that? Or are we trying to get something that has that feel, but is a little bit more modern, which is kind of what the historic guidelines, I believe, are trying to say? So I, I have the numbers. Number eight on the, on the materials was, is siding, I think? Metal roofing. The light fixtures don't have a historic look to them. The front door, the ladder type of thing, super contemporary. That's, that's just not a historic look at all. And garage doors, what do you do? I ended up making them look carriage-style, however, that kind of jumps out. And if the house jumping out was a problem, then adding carriage-style doors would just add to that issue. So what do you do with a garage door? We need them. It is 2025. We do want garages. How do we make that look less contemporary? So on the, on the plans, on the schematic, on the plans, they had the numbers of the exterior materials. So three was a stone veneer, five was the metal siding, six was the windows finish. So there we go. Thank you. Eight was the vertical siding. Oh, and the deck rails, which nobody spoke about, are, there's no deck rails in historic, anything that looked like that. That's what I gotta say. That's my notes on the materials. Pretty heavy duty, but. We can't, I'm sorry, when we can't answer you and you scream out from the audience. If we ask you a question, then you can answer?
However, we do know that the fire code exists, and we are creating a modern, you know, of this moment constructed building.
Okay, so we, we have this conversation in Tahoe Donner also, because I'm also on architectural standards there. Wooden siding legally meets wild urban interface fire code. So you don't have to have Hardy blank to be fireproof by state code.
I also should, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I want to add. So I'm in the guidelines, chapter 13, section 5, building materials. It does allow, it says newer synthetic materials may be considered, however, if they appear similar in character and detailing to traditional building materials. So I think you sort of said that, Mitch, which was, I would be okay with this siding, but as long as it had the wood detail and was horizontal.
Correct.
Which I think is consistent with what the code says here.
That's correct.
And that's subsection D, paragraph D, section 5 of chapter 13.
Thank you, Jason. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
I'm always here with your chapter and verse, Mitch.
He translates from my New York to California.
Can I, can I offer kind of a high-level comment before diving into materials and siding? I think, first of all, wonderful that we're gonna get so into details. I think I have a little bit of turmoil on this project, because I, I do have concerns about the design. I do think, I generally agree with what I read in the staff report. I have concerns about the materials, I have concerns about the architectural style, the veneer, the windows, et cetera. I think ultimately, my main concern is that I think it fails the primary test, which is to create a design that speaks to the historic character of the district, right? Which is, I think, the purpose of the guidelines. And I, and I, you know, and what that means and how to achieve that is challenging. But at the same time, I have a lot of empathy for the applicant, because I think this has been a very challenging process. And when I read through that timeline, and I, like Amy, was very confused by the timeline, because it just felt like so many versions have been flying around. I wasn't even sure which version of the plans we were reviewing at one point. The applicant letter made me really feel the experience of those changing goalposts, like, okay, I applied in August, and then I got told, fix some things, and I did, and then I went to HPAK and got told, fix some different things, and then I did, and then I went back and got told, fix some different things, and I did. And I, I really, I mean, that frustrates me, both as a person and with empathy, but also thinking about protect, you know, actually, the goal of this process, to create a better design, I don't think happens through like this design by committee of changing, like guidelines. And at the same time, I don't really think anyone did anything wrong, and specifically, I actually think this is probably a process problem, and maybe a little bit of a code problem, some unclarity in the code.
It's a process problem.
It's a process problem.
And no disparaging remarks to staff, however, the moving goalpost comment is heard by this commissioner a lot.
I've heard it a lot, too, in other contexts. So I'm very sympathetic to that, and I also want to point out that these, this issue is the one that was identified in our consultant report about the planning process. And again, this is not the time or place to solve that.
Correct.
But I do think.
Correct.
We need to solve it, because it's not helping either the applicant or the town, I think, in terms of achieving our goals.
Or us.
Or us. Now, having said all of that, I, you know, to get back to the matter, you know, as much empathy as I feel, and about how frustration I feel towards the process, I think, you know, back to the project before us, which is to see if we can make the findings according to the code and the guidelines. And Sammy, you were having us on materials. I think Mitch had it all. I am not sure I have much to add, except I want to say one thing. There was a line in the, in the code, I want to say, chapter 13, at the introduction, and it said something to the effect of, it's in the principles, in fact, it's the very first principle. It says, "The most successful approach is usually, quote, 'a contemporary interpretation of those styles seen historically.'" And then it lists in a separate page, all the styles for our district, which are Victorian, Queen Anne, folk Victorian, vernacular, pioneer vernacular, and craftsman. So Mitch, I appreciate, you know, I think it's great that we're looking at what's, what historic context we can find. I just want to point out that I think some of, sometimes, you know, we're looking at stone, and like, that's pioneer vernacular. Okay, great, but maybe craftsmen would have a different take on stone, and that's fine. I just want to acknowledge that. But I think one of the, sorry?
Absolutely, I said. And you couldn't get much more different than, than Victorian and craftsman.
Craftsman, yeah.
So how could that be in the same sentence?
But that's because it does speak to our histories kind of mishmash, but, but I think the challenge, and I said this at the start, the challenge I have with this design is that I think it speaks to, the visual design language it speaks is one of what was often called mountain modern, and that is not one of the seven listed. And I feel like the process has been a little bit of slapping design features on, whilst, you know, which creates this sort of, you know, not very successful approach. And so, yeah, I do have some challenges. Yeah, that's my high level. Back to you, Sammy.
Thank you, Jason. And if we just want to do high-level, you know, responses to what we're seeing, that may be what we need tonight.
I'd rather give more specific directions so that we don't have more moving goals again.
I just wanted to, okay, I just wanted to check.
I think there was a comment about snow storage, which I think is relevant here. My house has a metal roof, it is not in historic district. The snow slides right off. So what you have is your house pointing right at another structure, and that snow is just gonna go right toward them. And never mind the rest of the roofs, which are gonna put the snow in all kinds of amazing places that you will be surprised by, just looking at that. We get a lot of snow. I think, I think it is not really well-considered in this. And again, that's not for me, that's my opinion. You want a house that does weird things with snow? Okay. But we do have to consider neighbors, and there is not a lot of setback. And that is, I, I'm looking at that, I forgot the lady's name, I apologize. I'm looking at that tree, it's in the rendering, and I understand that tree's probably gonna be gone, and there's gonna be snow piling up between your two houses. And that's kind of an unfair thing to do to a neighbor. It does say that roof materials can be metal, so I, I am not gonna argue about that, but I do think you have to give consideration to your neighbors when you're angling your roof in such a way that's pointing right at them. So I think that's, and I'm, it's very clear in the guidelines, has to be horizontal. There are, there are pictures in here, there are lists of what the house's style should be like. So I, I think there is some clarity in that chapter that Jason was just referring to, and I did read it, I just didn't memorize it. Jason. It is not, when we're talking, can we talk about mass and scale for a second, am I, or am I jumping?
Can I make a comment on the roof material before you go, though?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I just do want to point out that in chapter 13, section 6, paragraph B, it does say metal, is, it can be appropriate, but it should be in an earth tone with a matte, non-reflective finish, which I think is not achieved here. And that, you know, which I think is, just to answer your question, Mitch, like, you were struggling with, like, it's metal, but it's not the corrugated metal that, like, we picture.
Yeah, and if we're going a little more contemporary, which it says in the first sentence, then, then you're in the right place. And Amy, just throwing out, you got a gable end facing the west property, their property is a gable end, so it's not gonna be dumping snow on their particular property. Now, next, the other one, the other one will be. Yours to the east, so then it is yours.
I don't have.
Okay. So no, then it is their property.
It is theirs.
Yes, that's their, they're on this side.
Any other thoughts on materials, and then we can jump to size and massing?
I also wanted to say about the stone veneer, I, I don't think it's consistent with either the historic, any historic building I can picture, I can think of. And I, by the way, in the town of Truckee, if you Google historic preservation Truckee, there's a wonderful website that has, I think that's like the 10th link on that page, lists every historic building in the town, and I. There's a wonderful website that has, I think that's like the 10th link on that page lists every historic building in the town. And I. Pulled that up as I walked around and, you know, because then you know what you're looking at, right? Versus real historic versus not. Although I didn't realize that some of the buildings, it's only a portion that's historic, not the whole building. So some learning I have to do still, but. Even with out that and with all of those design styles mentioned previously, I don't think this type of stone veneer matches. Anything. The closest is maybe craftsmen, but not really at all. They don't have stone like this. So. Yeah, anyway, go on.
All right, Mitch, did you? Do you have notes on some of your?
So I have my own concept, so. I would imagine. Not having lived 100 years ago, although I look like it. That a bigger lot would have a bigger house on it. So consistently comparing to smaller lots. Isn't really fair to the current owner of a larger lot. I would think if you go to RMU, the old CB White House, that's a huge structure. The hotel is a huge structure. So it's not that it's that out of whack if you had the property to actually do it. I think people historically didn't have the. It was, it was a working class neighborhood. They just didn't have the kind of money to put bigger houses in. So. And if you're looking at community continuity, then. The newer houses, in my opinion, do play. Removing the basement unless you're lowering the house. Makes no difference to me. The house will look exactly the same whether you can walk out of that basement or not. So I don't understand that concept at all unless you're actually lowering the home. Which I don't think was the requirement here. It was just to get rid of the floor space, which. I know on paper makes the number very large, but. It doesn't change the structure one iota from person from next time you go rafting down the truck. So I don't, I don't see that as a, as a case. You think it's large? A large lot? What do you do with it? I, I think probably the amount of windows make it look larger. I would think there was a way to skinny the windows up and maybe. More. Width is half the height would probably help. Historic look and get rid of some of that glass, not a whole lot of it, but probably enough for me to swallow it. So that's kind of my opinion. If you, from the street, it looks the same as all the other places on the street. And then from the bridge, I stood on the bridge and I walked on 1812's deck and I. The trees that won't be coming out are the ones that are in the backyard that are going to hide this structure from the bridge. Where the majority of pedestrians are going to be. I don't, I don't think it's, for the rafters and the kayakers, they'll see it. The average person.
Pretty fast when you go by.
Hopefully they're watching the river and not the houses, but you know, sometimes there's cool things going on in those houses and you want to see. That's, that's it with mass and scale. We need, I, I think Amy was almost kind of hitting on it with your FAR questions, right? Bigger lot, bigger house. So. I get that.
Amy, what was your, you were going to, you were going to go to mass and scale at the end of your last comment. I'm curious to hear.
Well, the reason why I kept asking about the FAR, which is, I know it's different from coverage, I get it. Is just, is it consistent at all? Because some of those lots are very small, right? You put a small house. I mean, there's. Not much you can do with it. So. It doesn't, it's, it seems consistent with. The other properties. I think we're, where we're getting in, where we're getting into trouble is the basement thing, which as Mitch just pointed out. They're not still going to, the house is still going to be where it is. You have to have something to support it. So I have no problem with. The size of it. And I don't think we should lay on an individual owner, a housing crisis. Because this is their lot. Their lot is a single family lot. We are not going to change that today, nor should we. So I just think there should be consideration. To the. The distance between the property line and maybe not to push that. Right to the edge, maybe give a little consideration in the planning to. The owners around. And there was pointed out that there's a snow storage problem. We have like in some places in the newer parts of Truckee, we have easements to cover this, and there's just not that in this particular street. So I do think you have to think about that. And I think the, the ownership and. Architecture team should think about. Making some changes that make this more in line with the historic without, you don't have to change the mass. I don't think we can ask. That that really be, I, I don't think we can make that an issue, especially with the FAR being in line. So. And I see that the photograph with the like mass and scale, and I did walk up and down the street and all the houses are just like filling their lots. So if we were concerned about river views, we, the general public. Should have been concerned about that years ago. So I can't, I don't, again, I don't think we have to lay those mistakes on one owner.
I would just say, we maybe can't talk about, I mean, we can't talk about anything, but maybe not focus on the size, but focus on the massing. So what we actually are visually perceiving the property to be. Which is maybe different than the actual square footage or lot coverage of the building. And I think Mitch, you had a good idea that really breaking up those windows and not making it, you know, we look at the back of that facade. And it is a wall of windows. So there's no. Really breakup or different, like different materials, but like it's not. There's no, it is very one note, I guess I'll say on the back. And it is very modern and contemporary looking. That being said, I think there are things that could be changed with how the windows are laid out, the, the. Proportions of those windows that could address some of that without changing the size of the home. I think you're right that. The basement, yes, would get rid of conditioned square feet, but it wouldn't actually reduce what we look at. So I think that I understand the recommendation that it was, you know, if we bring down the square footage, ideally the, the home would be smaller. But as we see it, it would probably still look the same. But I think breaking up those windows in a way that one is more referential to the. Windows that we see in the past, which those ones are not. And two, just adds more variation to that back, I think would be helpful. I don't know if you guys have any other thoughts about that. And I, and same with the front. I think the windows are just, they're too contemporary. They do not. From my, you know, going to the site, walking around the historic areas. They don't mimic anything, not that we should be mimicking, but they don't refer to any of the design styles that we've been talking about tonight. They are completely contemporary. And when they take up so much. Area on the facades, that's all we see and that's what we'll pay attention to. So I think that's one of the biggest, biggest design issues I have and see with mass of the building.
Oh, yeah, mass. I, I concur with what I've been hearing about mass and scaling. I think I'm okay with the square footage. I prefer to judge it from this facade on the street side. I just think. Even from the backside, and we'll talk about the windows, it's sort of like another category, right? Glazing. But from the river, you can't really see the basement level of these homes because you're down low. And there's, the, the bank kind of blocks it. And there's also a lot of vegetation. And then from the opposite side of the river, like the homes looking at it. Also, I think vegetation will block most of this bottom level. So I'm not too concerned about it from a visual. And again, I, I do want to judge it mostly from a visual perspective as, and, and I think FAR is a good guideline as well. I also want to point out that my understanding, maybe I'm mistaken, is that the guidelines actually suggest that you basically go to very, to very narrow side yards, very narrow setbacks from the neighboring properties. Because that is how the historic lots were developed, because as Mitch was pointing out, these were kind of working class neighborhoods that people built on every bit of land they owned. So I, because I think that very narrow. Setback side yard is consistent with what I've seen throughout the rest of the historic district. But I could be wrong, misinterpreting the design guidelines on those setbacks.
You say they're consistent in the staff report.
Right, yeah.
Yes, it's consistent.
Yeah.
Can I summarize what I have? So at this point, it would be leave the roof. Horizontal siding. A hardy plank with a wood grain. I would remove the wood accent you have in those gable ends and just go all the way through. Usually people didn't have too many styles of sidings as a regular rule. I would keep the windows at half the width of the height. I think the stone veneer, it's. Too modern and too much. Is, is the only way I could verbalize what's going on with that. No light fixtures need to be more. Historic appearing. The deck rails. Just don't work for me at all. The front door doesn't work for me at all personally. And the garage door is probably okay. I mean. That whole. I don't know what else to do with them. But I, the front door is a very contemporary, modern style, the way it's there. So are the deck rails. So that, that's my summary of, I, I think if we were to change those windows and change the veneer, the veneer. And some of the siding, I think the appearance might be less loud. Surrounded by more Victorian type homes. And then the appearance of mass and scale might not appear. So enormous. That's my, that's my opinion. And I hate to use the word me, but that's where I was. Sorry.
I, I would, actually I have a question for staff maybe. I'm a little, I would rather not, which I'm sure we've been dealing with this, I'd rather not say fix it this way. I'd rather say these are the concerns or the inconsistent areas. But, and because, and the reason is, I, I get, you know, for example. I agree, the siding is, the vertical siding is inconsistent, the texture is inconsistent, and I actually would add the color is inconsistent. But let's say they fix two of those things. They come back, you know, they fix the texture and they fix the color, but they keep verticality. I, I don't know. And then they come back with a whole new design. Everything looks amazing. And it's just, that's the one thing they didn't want to change. We might be okay with that. I'm not sure, right? I, I'm not going to opine. That's why I'm just worried about getting too prescriptive. So I'm just curious for staff, like where do you want us to go here?
I mean, it's sort of your option. So if you, as collectively as a commission, feel like you can make the findings that it's consistent with the guidelines, you'd be taking action to approve the project and all of the latest applications that go with it. You can make specific conditions of approval that either require those changes to come back to you as a commission or only certain things come back to you as a commission, and then the remainder is worked on with staff. So you have a lot of discretion. You could also pause and ask the applicant. You know, sort of where they're at with this process, given what they've heard so far, so that if the applicant says, you know, we're, this is the design we want, we don't want to make any changes. They, you would at least understand that as a commission. You know, whether or not they would want to appeal your decision. So you have a lot of tools you can use.
I'm kind of inclined to kind of opine up here and then send it to staff. I kind of thinks, I, I just think it's going to be hard to like, designed by committee. I don't know. What do we think?
I don't think so. I think they've been bounced around enough. So I think if we send them back with concepts that the four of us would be back on this dais and be the same four people consistently looking at what the same four people are recommending. And it's, that's not a say on staff. It's just how many eyes can you put on it and keep changing it?
Yeah.
That's, that's where I'm looking at it from.
And I think just to. We should perhaps ask the applicant, are you willing to make changes?
Can you come to the microphone so that we can have that as part of the video? The question was, are we willing to make changes? Yes, we're willing to make changes. However. As Mitch said. We have been running around in circles. And it has taken a lot of time, resources. And frankly, a lot of money. This is a big project for my family. We're not a family that's going to build in Marty's camp. We don't have that kind of money. And the process and the journey we've been on, we can't continue to do that. My kids will continue to share a room. So when you ask, are we willing to make changes? Yes, we are. But I feel like what's not happening is nobody knows what those. Like the right way to go. Nobody knows what the guidelines are. It could be this, it could be that. And, you know, if you're able to come to us and say, these are very clear. Do horizontal siding, even though the house across the street that was built is vertical and stained, like, that's really hard for me to digest because I'm like, that's so bizarre to me. But if you come to me and say, this is it. Then I'm okay with that. Because every time I speak to Ben, it costs me a lot of money. Him being here right now. And maybe, I don't know who's built a house or built something. But. It just, it takes a lot of time. And I can't keep doing that. So if you can be clear and concise, so I can go back and work with my team, I'm okay with that. I mean, our goal is to build our family home. And that's why we're here. And that's why I've. Said okay with the budget to be increased, just working with Ben. So. If you could help me out and be clear, I'm okay with that.
We'll do the best we can. It's, it is a subjective. Route route to go. It's, it is subjective and everybody has a different version of historic and everybody has a different version of large and everybody has a different version of the color of this wall. And. So it is, there is some subjectivity to it, but I agree. And that's what I was trying to say is we'd get as specific as we can to give you a specific direction. Maybe work with us offline. And then when it comes back, you should be good to go and get the same four people to look at it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because I drafted down some notes on like, you know, you had concern with color and this and that and, you know, we added the stone because. We wanted to make it less modern, because that was the feedback we were given. We were told the house was too dark, so we made it lighter to blend in more. Well, I can make the house pink with green trim because it will fit with all the other Disneyland houses on the street. You know what I mean? So like, I'm just like pulling my hair out. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you. And thank you for being willing to, you know, be willing to make changes and hear what we have to say. And we do want to respect your time and of course, the effort that you and your family have put into this project. And maybe with that, we can start making a list of proposed recommendations. Not being too prescriptive because, I mean, I'm not an architect and I think your architect will have an interpretation of everything that we are actually listing and saying. So we want to make sure that there's space for that, but we can come up with a list, I think tonight, of changes that we would like to see. In a, you know, in the next iteration of, of the design. Do we feel comfortable with that, permission?
Yes.
Okay.
So and I think just for staff's benefit, being clear of whether you're saying you're going to continue this item pending these coming back to you, or if you're taking action with conditions.
I think we would like to. Continue and have it come back to us.
And we can do a motion when we get to that point, but we're going to have Chelsea have the option for you to put those bullets on the screen.
Yes. So Chelsea, I was, that was going to be my next question. If you'll take notes on our list, then we can all see.
So should we just go straight down? Where are we with the roof? Where are you? Go ahead.
Mike.
Guys, when I hear requirements, I'm thinking it's required. And so there was some very. Confusing messaging that we've received in the past of this is required, but oh, it's not really required. So if you could help with that, that would be great.
Everything we're going to come up with is not a requirement.
We're just making recommendations.
I have to say that because legally, we can't require these things. We're suggesting that this is what will get you through the process. And we're going to try to be as succinct and.
Objective as we can.
Possible. But again, everybody sees that color differently. So it's, there is some subjectivity to it. So.
And there is a final, the chapter 13 and chapter 17 of the historic design guidelines that are each like nine pages long. I think every recommendation we make should be rooted in those. And they are, they're subjective. Don't get me wrong. Like there's going to be different interpretations, but. I think starting there, every, every change, every proposal, every, you know, I think. To get through this process at any point is to start with the code, right? And like do that table that staff produced in the staff report. That's one. Two. Is to go through and look at historic properties. The list is online. And if you want to do something, I would say go find a historic analog and that will help a lot as well. Or, or a design style that we know is historic and why that's an element of that design style.
Yeah, let's try to give as much direction as possible. I only want to come back to this once. to this once.
Do you want to do the list?
I agree.
So I can do the ones that I've got in front of me, which is the roof. I'm okay leaving the roof as long as it's matte.
I would, I would consider a color change, to be consistent with the design guidelines.
And what's wrong with the color?
It's not an earth tone, which is what the design guidelines say for metal roofs. I don't, I'm not going to die on this hill, but.
Are you saying a beige color?
It says metal roofs, metal roof material should be earth tones and have a matte, non-reflective finish. That is what the text says. So I would, earth tones can include browns, reds, ochres. There's a lot of examples in town, I think.
Like a dark bronze.
A dark brown.
Bronze.
I don't know, I mean, gray, is gray an earth tone? I don't know. Like, I don't think it is, but if I think it is, then I'm fine.
I mean, I mean, this is where it gets tricky, because again, when we think about, if this is referring to what were once corrugated roofs on old historic buildings, they were silver and wood rust over time and weather.
Right.
So if we have a gray roof, that is consistent with that historic nature.
I would go with that.
So I don't have a problem with the roof as long as it's matte.
Okay. That's fine with me.
All right. So can we put that down? As long as it's matte, the color you got is fine. The material you got, the style of metal, you're all good. I think we're all agreed on horizontal siding, or with a wood tone, the hardy plank.
Wood texture.
Or the cementitious material is okay. If it was me personally, and what the rest of you think, but they were, they added some wood in the gable ends, probably on a recommendation from somebody, but I think it should go away, because it wouldn't.
It's not historically accurate, that.
It wouldn't really look right. And then the only other siding I would question is the metal downstairs at the basement, the walkout basement, which for me is fine, but I just wanted to throw it out there and to make sure it doesn't come up later, and they got to go back, and I got to sit here and do this again. Can you repeat that?
Which metal?
What was the last thing, Mitch?
So if you look at the back of the house, the basement, I'm going to call it a basement for lack of a better word, the siding around that is metal. That matches the roof. So you guys didn't even notice that, then?
No. Yeah. Interesting.
Mitch, that was an effort to kind of make that space go away. You know, again, a lot of these are tough, because they're, they are responses to the, you know, the three rounds we've done, so.
So.
But we're all comfortable with the scale, so I don't think we need to hide that basement as much, because, and that's, so that's a solution for that problem.
So can it stay the metal, or should it go?
I don't think it has a historic analog in any of the styles or anything in town.
It's got to match the rest of the siding, unfortunately or unfortunately.
Or be that, like, basement rock look.
Yeah, either disguised as like...
Like 1882, that kind of thing, which I don't love, so I wouldn't recommend it, but.
You just did.
I mean, I would recommend it. I wouldn't do it in my own house, is what I would say.
Is that as clear as mud? So.
Just hearing this discussion, something that HPAK has allowed for in the past with both contemporary and doing foundations with old buildings, is board form concrete, not stained or painted. So just the raw board form as an alternative material.
Thank you.
Up to the applicant, then, yeah.
Would that work?
We originally had board form concrete in our, in our first iteration.
Thank you for bringing that up, that we can do it.
Again, that was, that was the move to the stone.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We'll go back to what we originally wanted.
I just want to add, Chelsea, the horizontal, sorry, I know you're taking notes still. Concrete, okay. Horizontal siding with wood texture. And, yeah, you got remove wood accents, metal side, okay, cool. I think that was everything on the.
Yeah, so we're not going to require wood. It can be the fiber cement board, but must be textured to look like a natural material.
Correct. Consistent with the design guidelines in chapter 13.
And then yes or no on the metal siding at the basement? I mean, you guys didn't even notice it, so.
I didn't personally notice it. I'm more distracted by the stone than the metal siding under the deck.
I just noticed that it was horizontal. I was like, oh, they could repeat that.
We don't have a strong feeling either way on the, the metal as far as removing that.
So is concrete, back to your board form, is that all right?
Either that, or we would just match the siding.
Okay. So we'll leave that the way it's written. Okay. So that's, does that take care of all the siding for everybody? Trim, fascia, it's, all the rest of that's okay? Amy? Sammy?
We didn't talk about the rock veneer.
That's next. Let's do it. Stone veneer. And so my notes say too much, it's too modern and too much.
We can remove that. That's not an issue. We only put that on to make it less modern, because we were told in the first round, we couldn't use board form concrete, so we, and said, they told us to use another stone. So we used a different stone, and that's.
So you're just going to go back to your board form concrete?
Yep. So we'll go back.
And then will that be to replace the stone, the entirety of the stone throughout, or just in the back there?
It will just go in the, the front and the back.
But not as high as what the stone is now, right? Back to where you were when you had the flatter type roof at the beginning of the process, which I looked at.
It was a shed, like that, but yes.
So can we, can we clarify a little bit? Because I think my understanding was that with one of the designs, the board form was the full first floor, but maybe I'm not remembering that right. So I just think we need to be clear about what the commission's saying as far as where board form is allowed.
I think we're saying it's allowed on the front and the back, but not the full first story.
So like one to two feet on the ground, off the ground, that kind of thing?
Some more like a wainscoting.
A wainscoting is more of a four foot.
We're okay with that?
That works.
And then what would have been nice is, we know we don't see this on the renderings, but there will be landscaping to also help camouflage some of this.
And if you want to really be historic, throw some horseshoes and some buckets in the concrete and that board form.
Just to clarify about the landscaping, so we do have no landscaping allowed within five feet of any building wall. So that's currently what's in the town standards. The fire department is, has become more aggressive with their application of what their landscaping is that's allowed. So it's really hard for us to know at this point what could get installed.
So this concrete wainscoting is, is it seen in any historic buildings?
Primarily just for when you go in and retrofit for foundations, but typically what they do is they'll bring the siding down to cover it, and then they'll just leave it raw, not painted or anything. So it's really just because a lot of the historic buildings didn't have full foundations, like Mitch said. They were made out of rock or railroad ties or whatever they had.
Because four feet is like half the height, almost half the height of the first floor. Personally, I don't know if that's going to speak to the historic district. I'd prefer more the siding to come lower, but I don't know.
Maybe we shouldn't specify, then.
Green.
Mike.
I think at that point, we would, we would not do the board form concrete, and we would just do siding in lieu of stone, to give it kind of a simpler, more monolithic, you know? And again, I think that's our, really, that's our goal, too, is to create, you know, a simple, you know, that talks to the historic vernacular.
Great. Thank you. I think that's, I think that'll look better, too. I think you'll be happier.
I think we should, in that note, say up to four foot height, that, we know you likely won't do this, but just making sure that the option is still available, should you change your mind, or...
Up to four foot from the street view, and then what about the basement? You're going to, you said you're going to go all the way down, Ben? In the basement, with the wood siding, with the cementitious material?
That's probably between the two retaining walls, right? We have actual structure that comes out.
Mm-hmm.
That, that holds earth back.
Right.
So, but what's infilled will probably just be, yeah, exactly, that horizontal.
I'm not sure that we heard consensus, because I think we have one commissioner who had concern about up to four feet on the front elevation, and some that say up to four feet is okay. So where are we at from a consensus standpoint?
So if you're trying to be historic, I'm just going to throw this out there, then concrete was super expensive, it still is, so they kept it to a minimum, so they would be the least amount of concrete as possible, and the wood would come down. That's historic. That's how things were built. So that's really, so you'd try to get rid of the board, you'd have some board form concrete, but the least amount possible.
And I think that's where we would land. We would try to, you know, again, this won't be, it'll be a functional wall as well, not just aesthetic.
Okay. Is that clear, staff?
I think we're going to change the wording on the screen, and then you can read it and confirm for us.
I would say minimize on the front facade, and then on the back facade, I think we were comfortable with the whole basement being concrete, correct?
They're not, he, Ben just said they're not going to do that. So they're going to use concrete where it needs to be to actually hold up dirt, soil, earth. And then in between those walls will be the siding, the wood siding. There's going to be a lot more of that, that horizontal lap cementitious material is what I'm hearing.
I think that's good language we have landed on, Chelsea.
Windows?
We didn't really talk windows yet. Wait, let me just check my notes before we move, because that's a kind of a new one. Did we talk on this list? We did siding, we did roof, stone veneer, siding, 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 stone, front door. You wanted to talk about front door, Mitch.
Do windows and door in the same.
Sure. Let's do that. You're right.
I agree with Mitch that the proportions need to change to, what was it, half width of height? And that is rooted in the design guidelines. I think, I think this is the area where we might see the most, I think the architect will have to play with the layout to see how, one, it affects the interior rooms, but then also how it will look on the, from the outside. So I don't know how prescriptive we can actually be, but I do think the proportions of the windows need to change.
I think this just goes back to your ability to make the findings and determining that it's consistent with the guidelines. So I think you're going to have to have some pretty clear direction here.
So let's separate the windows from the doors. So Ben, is it going to be an issue to redraw the windows at half, the width, half the height?
You know, I think on that front elevation, we're really close. You know, again, I.
I think you're a little low on some of them, but otherwise.
But that, that's not a big issue. I think where it's going to get challenging is that rear elevation where we have, you know, some sliding door systems, right? We've done our best to do divided lights to give it more texture. Again, kind of that, you know, one to two. But, yeah, again, that would, we'd just have to kind of take a pass at that and do our best.
I think maybe as staff, too, we're not, we weren't clear if they're true divided light windows or not.
In term, so, in other words, you just have, you're, you're saying, as compared to grids that are in between two panes of glass.
Correct.
Instead of truly divided?
Yep.
It looked to me like it was grids in between two panes.
Correct. Yeah, that'd be, you know, like typical CER Pacific windows, but, you know, with a one inch on either side.
So. I'm not a fan of divided lights. There's a lot more room for failure. They're super hard to clean, and it makes you feel like you're in a jail cell when you're inside looking out. So for me, it's not a big deal, but it might be for the rest of the commission. That's, that's my own personal opinion on it.
I am struggling to find a section of the design guidelines that speak to the windows specifically.
There isn't.
Okay.
As far as I can tell.
As far as I can tell. I think that many parts of it do tangentially. So I think, I don't know, you know, in chapter 13, I think it's number four, talks about, I forget which one, there's ones that just about traditional styles, traditional forms. I do think touch on windows, but there's not a specific, which is why it's going to be so hard to make a finding, because there's no actual guideline.
So in the presentation, Chelsea brought up general roof of windows, the height should be twice the dimension of the width, and that comes from more remodels? Is that what I heard?
It's from chapter six of the Historic Design Guidelines, which is, right, the context of that guideline is referring to changes to historic buildings. So that's the context of it, is the only place that windows are specifically mentioned in the Historic Design Guidelines, so we have used it as kind of an indirect guideline.
It's a nexus in my mind. So that's what you're looking for, Jason?
I did not read chapter six.
And then. So sliding glass doors. Not really historical, and then what do you change them to? French doors, which, sliding glass doors do a much better job keeping the weather out. They're just, it's more economical, better setup, but. Folks, so, and I don't see if you were doing, sliding glass doors, seven foot, six foot ten. So.
These look taller than that, but.
It doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, a sliding glass door does not fit to half the, the height is, is twice the dimension of the width. Doesn't, it doesn't fit that count. Can't do it.
Yeah, they do individually, right? But not the overall opening, Mitch? That's what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Not the frame itself.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I don't know how the rest of you all feel, but that, the mid and main level penetration is what I, is the most challenging to me visually, but also, I think, the most challenging to address, to make historic, keeping this idea intact of what they would like happen.
Are we still talking about windows or doors?
Doors.
Doors.
I mean, yeah, the other challenge, this is north facing, so we're trying to really kind of maximize the natural daylight. And it's hard to tell in that picture, but, you know, there's really big, significant overhangs. If you go down one more, you kind of start seeing how they're a little more set back than it appears in that elevation.
Which is also a little bit more mountain modern, so if you were to cut your head, your overhangs back.
And since it's north facing, you're not, you don't need the shade from them.
Right. So it's something to consider. It also costs you less to build, have less cantilever for the roof. Can we go back to that other slide, please? No, the back. That one? Thank you.
Is there a way to at least make these three consistent?
Which three?
The three in the, I beg your pardon, in the middle, the middle level? I think part of the problem is what we're seeing is three different types of doors in the back of one house. And I'm not, okay, we're not supposed to design anything, but I think that might solve your problem if you, if you take, if you take a, pick the design you like, and then stay with it, because you've got, what, Mitch, help me out, the, are those dorm, not dormers, right? What are these called?
These are the grids.
They're grids, and then there's no grids over here, and there's no grids over there, and then this door doesn't have a grid, but then this has two, and this has one. So if there was, it's not going to be historical, because they didn't have sliding glass doors, and here we are in 2025. But if there's a way to make that consistent, you'll get everyone to stop looking at your windows.
And especially.
Yeah, I hear you. With the divided lights, we added more of them in, because we felt like it took away from everyone saying, everyone kept telling us, oh, it's so much window. So then we added the divided lights based on some recommendations to kind of give it more texture.
Oh, no, that, that, I'm sorry, Mitch.
But I hear your point.
That's fine. You know, you, pick those, for sure, but just pick a style of which one of those two, of which one of those two and then make it consistent and then we'll all stop looking at them going, that seems very interesting. And I think the divide, that's your, your call, whether you use divide or not. I think it looks nice, but that's, my opinion does not matter, but I'm just thinking for, just to make it look consistent and maybe.
So your side lights going all the way down to the ground, which is probably not historic either, and that would probably help if the side lights, these are the side lights of the grids. So if they came up a little bit, and then do we allow the sliding glass doors or not? I mean, let's just.
I think just out of practicality and that's, they're more efficient, they're better now than a French door, and I don't know if we can get around that, but bringing up the side uh, windows, I think would help drastically and then consistency throughout that back main level. So I guess it's windows and doors, the comp, the, the pairing of each, the sets, I guess. Unless anyone else has strong feelings about sliding glass doors. Sorry.
Yeah, tell me what.
When they're open. Oh, they're like accordion doors. Okay, well.
They're all, they're going to go all the one side.
Yeah, yeah.
Which across the, all of them on the back are that way, or are they on the far, what is it?
Just the living room part.
And the dining room.
And then part of the dining room, but as you saw in the dining room, it's only a two panel, not a three panel.
So I, I, I get that, Joe, but.
So we don't have you at a mic and it's sort of at the chair's discretion if you want to take comments from the audience.
I, if you'd like to come up and make at, at the mic, then everyone can hear it because this is being recorded for people to view. So if you want to be heard, please do approach the mic and make your comment that way. If, if, if you're part of the applicant team or if we have a direct question for you. Um, so if you're not that, then please refrain from speaking and we'll let the applicant team answer our questions.
With that being said, I, I, sliding glass doors are one thing, the stackable ones, that's, now we're starting to go overboard again. I mean, if we're having a problem with too much glass, then.
Then I would recommend sliders over the stackable doors.
Regular, you know, sliders or some kind of a French door with smaller side lights.
I'm going to dissent on that one. So I do think, going back to the code, contemporary update to historic styles. If someone's updating their historic Victorian or the historic craftsman, they're probably adding a sliding door. They might even be adding a Nana door or whatever it's called. I'm just going to point that out. Second, it's, if this were on the front facade, I might be with you 100%. Or if this was like the porch or something, I'd be like, nah, no, right? But this is the back facade. I get that it is onto a historic, you know, a major property, you know, major, what's the word, resource of Truckee. I just don't think it's going to be, I, I, I'm comfortable with sliding and thus I'm comfortable with the other ones. I'm not going to stop at one technology that, over the other because it's newer or something.
I mean, I would say from just a perspective of what has been approved within the district, even sliding glass doors have been a discussion point with H pack because of their newness. So I think if you're going to group sliding glass doors or folding doors in the same category, I mean, really there aren't examples of either that I can think of that have been approved.
So that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that they're, they're all good or they're all bad. I'm not going to like distinguish between sliding and like stackable or whatever pocket, I don't know what the terms are. Because they're all like either, they're all like, I'm accepting that they're just completely inconsistent, but that to me, they're part of the contemporary update portion, or we're going to say they're just not at all consistent, not allowed in this whole category. That would be, that would be my push.
Then I would say no sliders.
I would tend to agree with Mitch.
And if we're trying to cut glazing down, then that's going to do it.
So I hear two for no sliding at all.
Agreed.
And I'm seeing a third. I'm, I'm still okay with the slide. I'm, I'm actually not as uncomfortable with the glazing on the back. But I understand why others are.
But they do the same thing. I guess I don't understand the difference between opening and opening.
If they do the same thing, then what's the difference?
So I would like to go back to sort of our decorum here. Um, it's at the chair's discretion if you want to allow for additional comment.
I think as long as we can keep this productive, I'm okay with it. Uh, as long as we're moving things along. I would like to stop the interruptions from the audience if that is okay. But I think that this, we're making progress, so I think we should keep going. But I do, you know, I respect your input, but also you need to respect ours. And I think that's, that's where we are.
So what this does is in my mind is if now if we're going to real French doors, then the side windows become real windows and then it, it fits the half the width to the size. So it's going to make this whole thing a lot easier. And that's what I was confused in looking at it. I didn't realize they were one big 10 foot unit, 12 foot unit. So I appreciate the update, Joe, even though it worked to your disadvantage. So is the rest of the commission good with the door?
Can we talk about the front door though, also?
Are we good with the back doors?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I, yeah, I accept. Uh, are we good with how it's described? Yes.
Sliding glass doors. Yes. Um, okay, front door. Maybe let's refer to the back door, like let's do back versus front on the list that we don't get.
So back lower door? Which one do you want to talk about? Sorry.
Or just on our list of recommendations. Sorry. Just for, so we don't forget what we're referring to, although I don't think we have a sliding glass door as our front door. But just want to be as clear. Okay, front door.
No, Mitch had some good comments.
So the front door is just very contemporary. The style of the ladder glass is a contemporary style. That goes, the only time I've ever put it on any house was a contemporary home. It was never a traditional type of thing. So what do the rest of the commissioners want when they, when we talk about a front door?
I'd say go around, find historic property that has a nice door entryway and copy that. That's what I would recommend. And, and tell us what you found and why. That's what I, I don't know, it's hard.
Yeah, it's.
It's not a glass door, by the way. It's a, it's a wood door. Yeah. So if you think it's that that's glass, it's not glass. It's solid wood door.
Is it?
Yes. It's just painted black or graphite. So.
I mean, the description then in the staff report is, is inaccurate if that is in fact a wood door. But I think what folks have issue with is the horizontal kind of ladder pattern, which is not something that I think historically we've seen.
That's fine. I don't mind changing the pattern on the front. It could be a solid, vertical, whatever.
Is the scale of the door a little, is that a problem or are you accepting that? It's like a, the very modern, like huge door, right?
What, what size is that door?
I believe it's three, six by eight feet.
So yeah, it's a little bit larger. So a three oh, you know, seven foot tall door is more normal.
I have a very tall husband, so I wanted a tall entry door. I'm being serious. And then my whole family, like they're, some of them are six, seven, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with the size of the door as long as it looks proportionate to if the windows have changed and any other changes that happen on this front facade. But not a. That satisfy your?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, the design guidelines do talk about a porch. It's highly encouraged. It's not in the design. I just want us to explicitly discuss it because I don't want it to come back and all of us to say, where's the porch? So the design guidelines repeatedly mention a porch. It's not in here. Are we okay with no porch? A front porch? That's sort of like a classic apparently of the historic guidelines.
It has a front porch. It's just, maybe it's hard to read in.
I'm not seeing, yeah.
That, that, that front gable comes out about 12 feet.
Wonderful. Then we have a porch.
Yeah.
Problem solved. Um, I'm just going through the guidelines still.
Garage door. Anybody having an issue with it? Sammy, Amy?
Has to match the front door, that's all.
I think light fixtures were another.
Light fixtures for me was super contemporary, but that's a tough one too, because you have night sky now, so.
Yes.
What do you do with it? Do you leave them?
I mean, as long as they're night sky compliant, which I believe they have been revised to be.
They are.
I would like to see something that may be a little bit more historic in nature, but understanding maybe some of the limitations now.
I mean, you can get any type of fixture that's a compliant fixture at this point in any style.
And I would like to see something a bit more historic. I don't know what that would.
Traditional?
Yeah, traditional.
Less contemporary is the wording I would have used.
Less contemporary. Maybe pulled from one of the design styles.
Deck rails? Which nobody brought up but Mitch?
Do you have a suggestion, Mitch? I don't think we disagree.
I'm like, wow, you know, I mean, they're beautiful. They're just part of that contemporary look. So I, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I'd hate to say, you know, you have to do something wooden or whatever. So I, and is it a problem at the other, if the first of you guys think it's okay, then it's okay. It's just a Mitch thing.
It's similar to windows, I would say, and sliding doors. Like we don't have a lot of precedent for sliding doors or railings similar to this, but um, I think H pack's primarily mostly been concerned about just full glass. Like that's been definitely kind of an issue with the river facing properties. So um, it's sort of if you think this is a way to change the contemporary feel or not, to match the guidelines better.
Is there any renditions that show the deck rail?
Yeah, just give us one second.
This one on this.
Uh, yeah, so.
I mean, I think what the commission said so far is maybe less contemporary. So I think if the applicant understands that and is comfortable looking at alternatives and that they could bring back to you, that would give them the option to look at designs that might match with the overall comments that you're providing versus the commission getting into the specific details because I mean, they have options to change, you know, maybe the post to wood that's, you know, they've got so many options and I think that's something that they could work on.
And I would say I don't recommend the gla, what I did on South River Street was we put in the crisscross to make it look super historical and then put glass in front of it to get the four inch spacing and it became a bowl that collected snow. It was horrible. So I don't recommend it.
I, I would, I would, you know, I, I think also just, you know, we are comfortable with contemporary updates, but to historic design styles. So a contemporary update to craftsmen or Victorian or this pioneer vernacular. I think the challenge we're having is that this is like a contemporary update to a mountain modern, which is not one of the historic design styles, but you know, I, I think, yeah, I'm not going to sit here and dictate exactly how it should look because I don't, I'm not a designer, I'm not an architect.
Yeah, I think it'd be easy enough to add some, just some more layer of detail in that deck rail. Kind of, I mean, the metal obviously for maintenance reasons and makes all the sense in the world, right? So right now it's a wood cap with, you know, kind of horizontal plate steel. But we could add some more vertical elements just to give it a little more texture. It's not a problem.
Just less contemporary is a word.
Yeah.
Well, there was two things that I had talked to Ben about when it came to the railings. One was I wanted to be able to see the river. That's why we saved our money and bought the lot and we want to be able to sit inside and look through our windows and see the beautiful river. So um, one of the, that's why we didn't go with a traditional really thick uh, wood um, deck or railing there. And then the other thing is, is growing up and being with Joe and Shelley at their house next door, snow is always an issue. And shoveling the snow off of the deck. And so we wanted something that was going to be easy to remove the snow. And one thing that he, anyway, so that was another concern of mine. So.
And a legitimate one.
Yeah. So um, we wanted to go with something a little bit thinner, something that the snow is going to be easily fall off of. So um, with new materials that are out there now, that was our, another big concern there.
Anything else?
I don't have anything, but that doesn't mean there's nothing else.
Um, Chelsea, there was a slide that had like the, you know, three or four things that you guys had come up with as potential issues. I want to just make sure we covered. Oh, wonderful.
Did you talk about color? Cause I feel like, yeah, we talked about color for, I haven't talked about color. Yeah.
So color used to be, and I'm not sure what's going on with this Danielle, so I've been hearing now different stories. So color used to be, the color palettes from Benjamin Moore and all the big companies have an H behind them. Those are the historic colors. And that was what we were supposed to use back when I was doing this on a full-time basis. Then when I repainted my house, I was told you weren't really checking. So we repainted our house. We ended up, my wife and I walked around downtown Truckee and found something that we thought looked really good. That was historic colors and that's what we used to do it. Now the house is being painted down the block from me on the corner of South River Street and Donna Pass Road, and he had to, once again, choose from a palette that existed. So I need some clarification from staff is what is the now guidelines for color for historic district?
So because we've implemented the streamlining options, so that's a staff level review where it's not going to the commission. The historic palette allows for that, but if someone wants to propose something else, then it would go to H pack for their review.
So colors in my mind, as long as it has the H behind it, they really do.
Has H pack made any, have they been sticking to the historic palette or have they made any kind of exceptions of note?
Well, so I mean, if, if hardy is actually the material that's being proposed, it comes either pre-colored or they can paint it afterwards. The pre-colored materials are often limited in color. And there's, we've had challenges with um, some siding, especially if it's got a lot of exposure where it's been painted after the fact. Most people don't want to paint a cementitious siding. So I think maybe that's something you could request to come back. And so at least you could understand what the color palette options are within a hardy material where it's pre-colored. And typically that's, you know, sort of in the realm of earth tones or, you know, something similar to other, other colors, sort of in the neighborhood, character area.
Would we want to request color that's as similar to a historic type color as possible?
Yeah, but can I ask Mitch, just you know the color palette better than I do. Are you implying that this color is not currently a color that is found in the palette, the historic palette, this gray that we're seeing?
I didn't check, but gray is in the historic palette.
Gray is.
Yeah.
A gray, some kind of gray.
Different, not every single gray, just as every single red or brown isn't in the historic palette, but they definitely have shades of gray in it. Usually is enough to choose from that you can be satisfied.
And the historic palette is found where exactly?
So when you get those keys, those flares from Benjamin Moore, the last 40, 30 of those are all H's.
Every paint store has an option for historic palette. Um, and there is a wide variety of color because traditionally, well, in Truckee, it was whatever kind of fell off the train, but which is often railroad colors. But um, even pinks, I mean, there, there are some very bold colors that still fall within the historic palette. So I think if you're looking for a range, you might want to provide sort of that suggestion. I think what I heard is that the gray in, in sort of this discussion that you've had felt more contemporary. And so you're looking for something that maybe had a warmer tone to it, but that's just what I'm inferring by what you've said.
And for me, no, the gray was fine.
You're okay with the gray? Yeah. I, I don't love the gray. I, I think it does read as very contemporary to me. I'm just not sure how I'm uncomfortable with taking that latitude, I would say. Um, so.
We had a darker color at the very beginning and we were told that the house was too flashy and too bold and stood out and.
I don't think we'd want to.
I don't think darker is the direction I'm suggesting.
And especially since we're taking away the cedar accents, I think we'd like to see something
like yellow?
More historic, not. Um, I mean, I think the color is up to you, but we're saying within that historic palette, I think also if you choose not to paint it, if there are options. I think also if you choose not to paint it, if there are options of the board that comes pre-colored.
And this is the difference between sort of a, you know, manufactured product and a natural wood product, because H-PAC has reviewed, like, semi-transparent stain, horizontal siding, which gives, you know, a different sort of transparency to what that looks like. It allows for different color options that are sort of reflective of historic. But when you get into these manufactured products, like, sometimes your choices are just much more limited. So I think that, you know, they can look at what's available and maybe bring a sample to you as the commission. The other thing that we were talking about sort of on the sideline here is a recommendation that a new rendering come back for the commission to review with the changes that you're putting in here, so that you do have the same level of understanding of the design that you got with the staff report already.
Yeah, my push would be, thank you, Danielle, I agree with all of those, so new renderings would be critical. I think my push on the color would be find me a historic building that's in this color palette, and, and show, and, you know, and, and just show that work a little bit. I think I'd be, you know, I'm sure there's a gray building in Truckee somewhere.
There's a really light gray at 10040 Southeast River Street.
What you're really asking for is justification behind some of these design choices.
Justification for the design choice, yeah.
Especially ones that may not be as consistent as we would like with the design standards, or.
Or that are not as plainly consistent, like, the gray is not what I, you know, I can think of five historic buildings right now, none of them are gray. I'm sure there's one out there. So, I would ask for, if the gray is really important for the applicant, kind of doing what Mitch did, right? Walk around, find a building that looks like you like it, snap a picture, hold up your product next to it, and say, this is the closest we can do, based on our choices, and we're okay with that. I think just, just a little justification on, on matching it to a historic property, I think would be, and, and I'm sure there's a light gray one. That's, you said 10?
10040 Southeast River Street.
So do we have to stick to the historic district of the river area where our house is? Because there's dark charcoal, there's stained vertical wood across the street, there's yellow, there's white.
None of those buildings are historic buildings, those are other new, modern buildings. Correct.
That got approved to be those colors.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Right, but looking at the historic buildings within the character area.
So we'll have to go and find the, the H color and stick to something like that.
Something close to it, and, yeah. Are you trying to get something that's pre-painted from Hardy? Is it a Hardy plank product? So one of their pre-painted colors?
Yeah.
So is, I don't know if they're gonna have any Hs for them specifically, so something that's as close as possible to an H is, was really.
I think we're looking for intent, right? Like, as long as the intent is consistent with historic properties, then, then we're willing to accept, you know, it's not exactly the same shade, that sort of thing. And actually, to the answer, there's only three buildings on this block. I would actually look a little further afield. I'd be okay with a property that's further afield. You know, the river.
The whole district, so.
Is actually both sides of the river, right?
Well, yeah, not river, east and, the south side of East and West River Street.
So that's actually a lot of area to pull from. And if it had to be, if for whatever reason there's no color in any of that section that matched, I would even be okay with another, with something, another historic building outside of this character area, assuming preferably that it was a residential building and not a commercial.
And that it was approved.
And that.
You have to remember, you just walk around the street, and maybe somebody painted something that wasn't approved, so you have to be careful with that, too.
I would agree with your statement, because there's a lot of houses on the street, Southeast River Street, that probably don't have approved historic colors.
That's just.
But then we're being asked to do that, so.
No, all those colors are historic. All those colors are, I'm sure they did the same, they're doing the same thing we're doing here, which is find us some analog.
They got their approval, Jason, then they might have changed it later without permission.
Yeah, but let's not assume that.
Just because someone did that, I think we're here with the best intention to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood where we look and.
Yeah, looking at historic.
Also, there, there are 191 colors in Benjamin Moore's historic section, so that does give you wide latitude.
Thank you. Ben, can you handle this?
Way, way more than I'd want to consider.
I think we can make it work. 190 colors? 92?
191. Anything else, folks? Sorry, Sammy.
I appreciate it, this is a group effort tonight, we're all kind of.
I don't want to be stepping on everybody's toes.
No. I think that's everything.
So just from a operations standpoint, if you take a motion tonight to have this come back, then at the next meeting, we'll have some time to help prepare some findings based on this discussion for you, so that you could have that available.
Should we ask? Yes, that was my next question. So our next meeting would be August?
We have capacity, excuse me, we have capacity at the August hearing if the applicant team feels like they can be ready in time for that.
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Certainly, yeah, we understand that.
So, so we don't need to do date and time certain?
No, you, you would do uncertain, and then we would just re-notice.
Okay.
Perfect. Do you want us to write a motion, or suggest a?
I think, do we have, was a continuance one of our alternative actions? And then we just kind of make a motion from there?
Making a motion to continue it with the direction that you provided that's on the screen.
I'm gonna make a motion to, I'm gonna make a motion to continue date and time uncertain with the recommendations on the screen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner Toops?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion passes. Thank you very much for your participation tonight. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing this come back, and wish you the best of luck in, in some of the redesign.
Okay, that was item 7.9. Thank you. Thank you, fellow commissioners, thank you, Sammy, for taking that item. Do we have any staff reports? Let's wrap this up. Do we have any staff reports?
Yes, I'll be quick. We may or may not see this item back next month, for your consideration. And as of right now, we're still kind of determining what else we might have that evening. We don't have any projects definitively on the calendar at this point, and we should know more within the next week or so.
We still have the 29th, though.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I was moving to August because we had just talked about that. We do have a meeting July 29th, that'll be consideration of the Edmunds Loffs project, which is a 12-unit affordable housing project in Gateway.
Thank you.
Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
That is on, in August, or is that the 29th?
It's July 29th. Number 11 tonight is adjournment to that meeting, which is on July 29th at 5:00.
Okay, thanks. I will not be here for that meeting. Are there any other information items that you have for us? Any commissioner reports?
Nada.
No, but one thing I just remembered is, I feel like September, we were maybe having some absences.
Yes.
So if this item, the Van Gorder residence comes back in September, then we may not have the full four of us here.
I've actually, September and October for myself personally, unfortunately, but that's.
Just, just for consideration, I don't know if we can do it the three of us.
We can still meet with three, but will we, do we have three on September?
Would they prefer all four?
I think I know Mitch's intentions, I'm kidding.
Do we have three of you at the September meeting?
Is it the 16th, is that correct?
If it's the third Tuesday, yes. So as long as we have three of you, you can make a decision that evening.
I mean, it might be an incentive for them to work to get in front of you back in August.
Yeah, we should probably let them know that.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'm gonna hear from Joe somewhere along the line.
Any other commissioner items? I challenge the rest of you to ride, everybody to ride here for the next meeting. There were three of us tonight, that leads you to need, I know, you came from somewhere else, okay. With that, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you all.